So, call to order, the October 10th Planning Commission hearing for the City of Little Rock, as a matter of housekeeping. Anybody that would like to speak, please make sure you fill out one of the green cards if you have not done so already. We do have one card here, I want to mention quickly, that did not put an item that they want to speak for, Mr. Mac Wet. Gosh, I hope I got that right. There wasn't an item listed that you wanted to speak either for or against?
Against.
Which item?
Fred was supposed to get those cards.
I'm sorry? Calhoun Street? Bonnie, which item is that? Thirteen? Okay. Thank you, sir. And I'm sorry, you're in opposition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, and if everybody has submitted their cards who would like to speak, we will move forward with a roll call, please.
You ready for a roll call vote, Chair?
Yes, sir.
All right. This is a roll call vote for October 10th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Hodges?
Here.
McDonald? Person?
Here.
Samad?
Here.
Vogel? Baxter?
Here.
Russell?
Present.
Vickers? We have a quorum, have seven members present.
We have a roll call and a quorum. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes from last month's meeting? Any corrections? Any corrections by staff? No? If there are no corrections and no discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown? Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Here.
McDonald? Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers? Minutes are approved.
All right. So, moving on first with old business. Let's see, we have items number one, two, three, four, five. I don't have control over this, so how many, how many do we have on old business? Are there any being removed? Okay, so, okay. Yeah. Consent agenda, please, sir.
Okay, following is the consent agenda, Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of Okay, okay. October 10th, 2024. First are the items that are going to be deferred or withdrawn. Item number one, file number S1963 is being deferred to the December 12th agenda due to further legal issues. The deferral will not be charged to the applicant. Item number five, Z10024 is being deferred to the November 14th agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. Item six, Z10011 is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Item nine, Z9891B is being deferred to the January 9th, 2025 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item number 10, Z9892B is being deferred to the January 9th, 2025 agenda at the request of the applicant. Item 11, Z10032 is being deferred to the November 14th agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 12, Z10045 is being deferred to the November 14th agenda at the request of the applicant. Item 15, Z6886D is being deferred to the November 14th agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to surrounding property owners. Item 19, Z10055 is being deferred to the November 14th agenda as the applicant failed to complete notifications to the surrounding property owners. And I believe we need to add item 22, Z10034. This item had notices that went out that had the 12th Street address on it. We had, did have people today show up at 12th Street for the meeting, so we're, we need to defer that due to that discrepancy, and we'll need to defer item 22 to November 14. Next are the items on consent approval. Item two, file number Z, file number S1978, lot nine and a portion of lot eight, block 281, original City of Little Rock replat, 417 East 10th Street.
Sorry, Mr. Moore, before we move on with the, with the consent agenda, because item 22 did not have proper notification, but it was essentially an error by the city, should we go ahead and vote to approve the deferral of that application, since it was on the regular agenda?
Well-
And there is a card in opposition. So it, it would have been pulled to the regular agenda, so in order to defer, we would have to vote. Should we do that first and then go into the consent?
Unless the city attorney objects, I think you can do it as the consent, as your vote on the consent agenda, because we're moving it to deferral.
Chair, you have a lot of discretion on how you want to handle that, so if, if you want to hold it separately, you can, or if you want to bundle it, you can do that as well.
I think because there was somebody that showed up in opposition, I'd like to go ahead and vote on the deferral for that and make sure that it's clear that it's at the city's expense, not the applicant's expense, because the applicator, because the notice was incorrect.
So do we want to just move it to the first regular agenda item then and take care of that first thing after the consent?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Twenty-two. Okay, the following items on the consent approval agenda. Item two, file number S1978, lot nine and a portion of lot eight, block 281, original City of Little Rock replat, 417 East 10th Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested replat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item three, Z7595A, LNA Enterprises PDR, 1801 Aldersgate Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item number eight, S1980 Zion Square replat of block 82, John Barrows Edition 6L, south side of West 29th Street between Zion Street and Cobb Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested replat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. We're moving item 13 to the regular agenda for public hearing. Item 14, Z10050 Perkins Multi-Sectional Manufactured Home Conditional Use Permit, 17824 Corinthian Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item 16, Z9121A, Honeysuckle Place Phase Two PDR, east side of Honeysuckle Lane within the 6800 block. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item 17 is being moved to the regular agenda for public hearing. Item 18, Z10053, Markowski PDR, 4306 West 11th Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item 20, A348 and Z10065, Trex Annexation and I-3 Heavy Industrial Zoning, 6401 Tebow Road. Staff recommends approval of the annexation and zoning to I-3 Heavy Industrial. Item 21 is the 2025 Planning Commission calendar. Item 20, again, item 22 is being moved to, to the regular agenda for deferral. Item 23, Z10041 Hillcrest Group STRPCD, 2923 Kavanaugh Boulevard, Suite G. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. And the final item on consent approval is item 25, Z10047 Keen 2 STR2 PDC, 1200 North Bryan Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDC zoning request subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. That concludes the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the record to reflect that Commissioner McDonald has arrived.
Okay, thank you. All right, having read the consent agenda, are there any commissioners that have any objections to the consent agenda? If so, or any items on the consent agenda, if so, the item will be moved to the regular agenda for a full discussion. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by staff.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the consent agenda will be approved as read by staff.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers? The consent agenda has been approved.
All right. Moving on to the regular agenda, Mr. Moore, just to keep things simple, let's just go chronologically. I don't, I don't want to change the order up.
Do we, do we want to address that item 22 first?
Yes, I'm sorry, that one we do. So, item number 22, Application Z10034 STR2 PDC at 2014 North Cleveland Street. The notification was sent out to property owners to the wrong address, and we are recommending deferral at the city's expense since it was a mistake in, in the filing.
So moved. Yeah.
No further discussion, motion on the floor, a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers? Item 22 has been deferred to the November agenda.
All right. And, no, we got a packed house here tonight, so anybody who was here for an item that was on the consent agenda, obviously, we'd love to have you stay, but you don't have to. So you can feel free to leave at any time.
We need your chair.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Moore?
Ms. Chair, at this point, on the regular agenda, we have items four, seven, 7.1, 13, 17, 24, and 26. You only have eight commissioners present. It's the practice of this commission to offer a deferral to any applicants in hopes of going to the next meeting, then there being more commissioners present.
So for any, for any applicants here present who, who don't understand what that means, in order to be approved, you need a majority vote of the full commission, not just those commissioners who are here present. The full commission is a total of 11 members, which means you need a minimum of six yes votes in order to approve an application. There are eight present, which means you need six out of the eight who are present. Anyone, any applicant who would like to defer at the city's expense to the next, right, is that at the city's?
No, it is, it is charged to the applicant, but they don't, they can defer for no reason other than the birth commissioners.
So it'll be a deferral without prejudice until the next public hearing in November. Any takers? All right, we'll move on. Oh, sorry, yes, sir. Come to the podium, state your name and the application number, please.
That's Delta Real Estate, and the items are seven and 7.1, and in view of the fact there are only eight members present, we would defer.
Okay, any discussion by the commissioners? Yes, Mr. Moore?
You will then take a vote on the, on each of these?
Yes, correct. Any need for a discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the deferral of items seven and 7.1 at the applicant's expense until the November Planning Commission hearing.
I move that.
So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Excuse me. Person?
Yes.
Vogel? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers? Items seven and 7.1 have been deferred to the November agenda.
And we are clear in this room like nobody's business, I love it.
Oh.
Mr. Chair, I have a odd request. Someone, someone left their keys down there at the security desk, so I'll just make a general announcement.
They'll, they'll be back in short order, I'm sure.
So if, if your keys look like this and they say 400 West Capital, oh, hey, we have
Winter, winter chicken dinner.
Um, I, I needed to recuse myself from one of the items, and so while they're leaving, I would think they'd give them an opportunity because it's going to bring down the votes another.
Which item?
Goodwin Manor.
Goodwin Manor?
Yes.
What's the reason for your recusal?
Um, I, my company was representing the seller at the-
Representing the seller?
Yes, at one point in time represented the seller, so I have to recuse myself.
But they're not representing the seller in this action?
No, but I also have someone that I'm related to that is on the other, on the opposition side as well.
Okay. So, for the applicant that is here for Goodwin Manor, item number 17, that would bring the number of commissioners able to vote on the action down to seven from eight. I'll allow you to accept or to request a deferral until November if you so choose. Okay, all right. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move forward. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move forward with the regular agenda, thank you, everyone. For those that are standing, lots of empty seats. Just saying.
Okay, your next item is item number four, file number Z eighty-nine eleven A, De La Rosa Revised PCD, ninety-one twenty-three Chico Road. On March eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, the Little Rock Board of Directors approved the Wallace Baseline Acres preliminary plat, ordinance number twenty-eight sixty, to be rezoned from R two to PCD to allow for the rezoning of lots one and two with conditions. Lots three and four, the overall track remains zoned as single-family residential. The approved PCD site plan for lot two, which is this subject property, showed an existing billboard and a small temporary office building with no additional improvements. The applicant is now proposing to revise the existing PCD for lot two to allow for the continued use on the property for retail and mobile canteen unit uses. The applicant proposes to retain an existing food truck and place an additional food truck on the site. Both food trucks will be permanently placed on the property. Access to the site is provided from an asphalt driveway extending from Chico Road. The driveway opens up to a gravel parking lot and spans most of the property. The property is secured by chain link fence with an access gate along Chico Road. There is shared access with the properties to the north and south. The property contains the existing, the following existing uses. An eight-foot by forty-foot metal container near the northwest corner of the site, which contains a retail use. An eight-foot by twenty-six-foot single wide manufactured home labeled office along the south property line. The applicant notes that the current use of this structure is for storage and not an office use. The wood porch with a canopy extends from the storage use. A thirty-foot by thirteen-foot concrete pad containing an existing food truck use is located immediately north of the wood porch canopy area. And again, a billboard is located at the southwest corner of the property. As part of this request, the applicant is proposing to build a concrete pad and place a second food truck on the property adjacent to the existing food truck. Staff is not supportive of the applicant's request to revise the PCD. The property is currently undeveloped and has remained undeveloped for the duration of the existing uses on the property. The asphalt at the entry into the property shows wear and contains potholes. In addition, it appears gravel from the properties washing out from the side and collecting on the sidewalk and further into the Chico Road right-of-way. Finally, staff feels plans for a more permanent development should be proposed and not the placement of several temporary structures on the site. And not the placement of temporary structures on the site would be more appropriate for this location. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested PCD rezoning.
All right, thank you, staff. Is the applicant present? If so, please come to the podium.
Hi, good afternoon. I am Giselle, I am the daughter of Lorena de La Rosa. So I'll be speaking for her on her behalf.
Okay, wonderful. So there are no, there is no one here to speak in opposition or support of the application. It is simply the city staff's recommendation for denial, which is why it's on the regular agenda. So if you would like to present your case for the application, please feel free.
Well, okay, I'm really not good at public speaking, so I apologize in advance. But my mom has been operating for about seventeen years. And in those seventeen years, she has never once received a notice for other businesses around the area. And so she just thinks that we're being treated unfairly, unjustly, because there are other food trucks around that area that do not have a dumpster. They do not have a container to dispose of grease, and they do not have a container to dispose dirty water. And I myself have seen a food truck on Baseline Road near the ice machine, and they just pour out their dirty water onto the parking lot, and it reeks, it stinks. And the city doesn't do anything about it. There's two food trucks here in downtown that are not attached to vehicles, but we are. And we only want to stay on that lot because my mom owns that lot, she's the owner of that lot. And we want to permanently stay on that lot for as long as she, as long as she lives, as long as she continues working. Because really, we don't disturb anyone, we don't do anything. We just want to operate out of our lot. And the whole potholes, everything, just last week, my dad covered all of those potholes. And I think, honestly, I don't have anything else to say except for that.
Thank you very much. Any questions from?
This talks about additional food trucks, these are your food trucks that you wanted to add, not like leasing other food trucks?
On the lot?
Yeah, it says you want to put additional food trucks on there.
Oh, they're ours, both of them are ours.
The ones you wanted to add are yours?
Yes.
My question is for staff. On the agenda staff report, it says the current zoning is PCD. But in the background description, it says the, oh, I'm sorry, March eighteenth, two thousand four, it was rezoned from R two to a PCD?
Yes.
So is this use not within the bounds of PCD? Are they requesting a variance for this use specifically?
No, at the time, the PCD was approved on this, for this lot. It had an existing billboard on the site plan and a small temporary office building. That was all that was on the site plan at that time.
Okay.
And since then, they've added the food truck, the metal container, and now they want to add another second food truck.
Okay. And staff's position is?
We feel that it would be more appropriate to come in with a permanent, more permanent development without temporary buildings, basically.
Okay. But the proposed use is not outside of the realm of the PCD?
No.
Any other questions or discussion from commissioners?
Yes, did you say that both the food trucks are attached to vehicles?
Yes, they are.
So they're both movable?
Yes, and we did have a city official tell us that we need to move them, for example, to storages or any other area. We used to move them to our house on the front yard, and then the city said, no, you can't do that, and I said, okay. And so that's why we bought the lot, and then they're telling us that we need to move it to a storage unit. But it's too risky. The storage unit near our business has homeless people in there, and they've just ransacked everything. And we used to have our restaurant supplies in there, because my mom used to have a restaurant. And they just stole everything, and we never once received any money, any check or items for the supplies that we've, the supplies that got stolen. So we just, that's why we have a lot, because we don't want to move it, it's just too risky. And I don't think the city will want to, I don't know. If something were to happen to them, I don't think the city would want to, you know, provide support or something.
So if the application were approved, then these food trucks would, in essence, become relatively permanent in nature, they would not be moved around?
Right. We don't want to move them at all. My mom stays there, she operates there every day. People, we get calls saying, would you like to come to this place, and my mom says no. That's why she purchased the lot, just to operate out of there, because a lot of people know us, and she doesn't want to move it.
Thank you very much.
And how long have the food trucks been there? Even in just an temporary capacity?
She started off, I don't think, I don't know if you guys know Fazmart on Chico Road. She started off there back in like two thousand seven, and she stayed there for a couple of years. And then we started renting that lot by Mark Stonespear, I think that's how you pronounce it, I don't know. And so now, recently this year, she purchased that lot so she can become the owner of it and just use it to keep her food trucks on there.
Thank you. And staff, just to clarify, the surrounding uses of this lot are all commercial, with the exception of some residential low density. Is that correct? Based on the land use map that's provided on page six?
The property to the north is PCD and C three, further north, it's C three to the south. And to the west across Chico, and it's R two to the east.
All right. Any further discussion by commissioners? Questions for the applicant? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the application as submitted, with all staff's recommendations. With the exception of denial.
Yeah, I would make that motion that we approve the application with all staff comments, except the recommendation of denial.
We have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel? Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers?
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh my God.
It's your show.
Next item is item thirteen, file number Z ten thousand forty-nine, Wyatt Accessory Dwelling Conditional Use Permit, ten fifteen Calhoun Street. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow accessory dwelling to be constructed in conjunction with the construction of a new single-family residence. The property is located on the east side of Calhoun Street between East Tenth and Eleventh Streets. The property is currently undeveloped and mostly grass-covered. The proposed principal structure will be a one-story, twelve-hundred-square-foot, single-family residence with two bedrooms, two baths. The structure will have a height of approximately nineteen feet four inches. The proposed principal residence will comply with all building setbacks, except the front setback, which has been proposed of twenty feet. Section thirty-six two fifty-five D one of the city's zoning ordinance requires a minimum front setback of twenty-five feet. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a variance. Staff, it does support this variance, the proposed front setback will be similar to other front building setbacks in the area. The proposed accessory dwelling will also be one-story in height, nineteen feet four inches, and six hundred square feet in area. The accessory dwelling will be a one-bedroom, one-bath structure. The accessory structure will comply with all building setbacks, separation, and rear yard coverage. A one-car-wide driveway from Calhoun Street will be constructed at the northwest corner of the lot. The proposed driveway will run along the north side of the principal structure into the rear yard area, where there will be four parking spaces. The parking does comply with ordinance standards. To staff's knowledge, there are no outstanding issues associated with this CUP request. Staff is in support of the requested conditional use permit and believes the request is reasonable and the proposed use is appropriate for this location. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Is the applicant present for this application?
Yes.
Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Melissa Wyatt.
Ms. Wyatt, we do have two cards for your application in support and two in opposition. If you would like, you can defer your time and allow the, those in support and those in opposition to speak first, and then come back up to the podium. Or if you would like, you can present your application now.
I'll defer.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to kind of go back and forth, I'm going to start with support. And Joyce? I cannot read your last name, I'm sorry. Joyce, is it Thompson? Yes. And for all of those in support and opposition, I am going to limit comments to two minutes per person. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joyce Thompson, ten seventeen Calhoun, Little Rock, Arkansas, seven two two zero two.
The floor is yours.
Four. I'm for the project.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. And in opposition, we have Janine Cloyard. C-L-O-Y-R-D. And again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Janine Cloyard. My home address is thirteen six twenty Dover Cove, North Little Rock. I'm going to pass my opposition at this time.
Okay. And moving back to support, we have Gregory Simmons?
I'm here to support it.
Wonderful, thank you, sir. And last in opposition, we have Mr. Mac Wet.
I'm here for ten, ten fifteen Calhoun.
Yes, sir.
Oppose.
Okay, thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come back to the podium? Usually, we have a little bit more detail on support and opposition, so this is a little, you guys are just making this easy on me, I love it. So if you'd like to say anything about your application, please feel free.
I don't, we're just adding more housing to the Little Rock community, which we need. Of course, you guys know this is not my first project, it's not going to be my last one. So I think adding a single-family home, you know, and an ADU to the back just brings more housing, and we need it.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any, don't go anywhere just yet. Any questions from commissioners?
I do have one question.
Sure.
To those that are in opposition, why are you all in opposition? I didn't get, we didn't get any dialogue as far as why you're in opposition of this.
Anyone in opposition, if you'd like to come back up, please feel free.
My name's Janine Cloyard. First of all, we also got the wrong address, we also, I also got the letter to report to Twelfth Street. We had no idea before coming here today, you know, what this was about, the conditional use permit. So, yeah, like, you don't just, I didn't want to just agree and not really know what I was agreeing to.
So the fact that you have an idea now?
Now that I know that it's a single-family dwelling and not some apartment complex or something that's going up, I mean, I'm better with that, I don't know all the details, I'm better with it, knowing that it's a single-family dwelling. I do feel like ours should have been tabled as well, since we all got the wrong address and showed up at the wrong place, but I'm okay with it.
Staff, is that true?
I will, I'll check.
I have my letter.
All right, this may be similar to the first one, but to know something looking at, says October tenth, planning commission meeting, board of directors' chambers, second floor, five hundred Broadway. See if I can find her name on the.
That's the copy that was supplied by the applicant?
Yes, sir, this is what I have, it was provided by the applicant. Okay, and Doris and Johnny Cloyard, on the ownership search, is listed as landowner number twenty. And there is also a certified mail receipt that indicates that today's meeting at this venue was mailed by certified mail as required.
Thank you, Torrance.
However, Mr. Chairman, similar to the last one, the notice that I have says the center in University Park, so this is similar to the previous notice, notice, but it does say October tenth.
I'm sorry, my name is Ronnie Jackson, and I'm president of the East Little Rock Neighborhood Association. And so when there was some concern about this dwelling coming up, uh, I called planning commission and I spoke with someone on Monday. He said he would be operating the cameras for these, I spoke to you. And I confirmed that the meeting was gonna be held at the, uh, Center at University. And he said, no, it's gonna be at City Hall. The information I received via text message from one of our residents said it was gonna be at the Center at University. It was not here at City Hall. He confirmed it and clarified it, and that's when I shared it with some people that I knew of. So it was miscommunication, and we was about to leave out the door. Not that we're not in support of what you're doing, but we were about to leave out the door because there was still confusion with regard was, was this item being deferred tonight and this afternoon. So there was a lot of confusion. We was at the elevator, and I said, hold on, when I looked at the agenda item out here to see that it was still on the agenda for today. So thank you, however you all decide, it's fine, but there was a lot of miscommunication because I know that the meetings have been held at the university, Center at University, and now it's back down here at City Hall. So thank you.
Correct. Yeah, Ms. Wyatt, would you mind coming back to the podium? I, I would say in an overabundant caution and to make sure that we as a commission remain consistent.
Absolutely.
It would be best to defer and re-notify and make sure we have the right notification that's being sent to the property owners so that they, so that their due process is maintained.
Okay, not a problem.
So if you would, make a formal request to defer to the November hearing.
Okay, I'd like to make a formal request to defer to the November meeting.
Okay. We have a request to defer by the applicant.
Yeah, I'd, I'd make a motion that we accept the deferral from the applicant at this, and re-notify at the city's expense.
Re-notify at the city's expense. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
A second, Mr. Chairman. You ready?
Okay.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogels? Absent. Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers? Absent. The item has been deferred to the November agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. We do apologize for the confusion, but.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll get it right.
Okay, the next item is item seventeen, file number Z ninety-five-hundred-C, the Goodwin P C D, thirty-seven oh eight Garrison Road. The applicant is proposing to rezone five acres of property from R two to P C D. The primary use of the property will remain as a single-family residence. As part of the application, the applicant is requesting some non-residential uses. The property is located within the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. Access to the property is via a private fifty-foot-wide access easement from Garrison Road. The applicant notes that the property will remain as a single-family residence. The proposed other uses will inclu- will include a regenerative farm, vegetable garden, ornamental flower garden, greenhouse, the raising of livestock, a studio kitchen, product development and retail use component. In addition, the applicant notes the desire to utilize the property for educational and agricultural field trips for public school students, community charity and culinary-themed events, along with educational farm, garden and farm tours. Some of the proposed non-residential uses will be ticketed events. Additional, the, an additional description of events as per the applicant is as follows. The property is first a primary residence for a family of eight with planned events offered throughout the year, including lunch and garden tours held during the day, seasonal daytime events such as storytime with Santa, Easter brunch, Mother's Day tea and harvest events for families, outdoor intimate wedding and dinner events limited to twelve to fifteen events per year. The applicant notes that a restaurant will not be built on the property, but any chef or catering company providing food on the property will have a serve-safe food handler certification and will be preparing food in a retail establishment certified by the Arkansas Department of Health. Hours of operation will be from nine A M. to ten P M. with limited evening events and in compliance with the Plasky County Noise Ordinance. There'll be a grass-covered parking area for eighty-one parking spaces. This is located southeast of the resident, existing residence. The applicant notes that the property meets A D A standards for access and restrooms and that no more than two hundred guests will be permitted for any occasion at any given time. Staff feels the existing parking is sufficient to serve the use. Staff is supportive of the requested P C D zoning. Staff feels the request is reasonable. There are no outstanding, outstanding issues with this application as the applicant provided responses to all issues raised by staff. Properties in the general area contain developed and non-developed residential zoning and uses on large lots. Staff feels that with adequate noise mitigation and operating hours, the proposed use will not have an adverse impact on the surrounding properties, and staff recommends approval of the requested P C D subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. We do have a number of cards in both support and opposition to this item. Mr. Moore, could you also clarify, I'm sure my email, just like everybody else's, has been inundated with support as well as opposition for this item. Do we have a final tally on emails received both in support and in opposition?
I have received and logged thirty-three correspondence items regarding this application in the form of individual letters, petitions, emails to staff and, and planning commission. If it was mailed to a planning commission, it wasn't forwarded to me, I probably don't have it. Commissioner Lundey sent me several, probably about half of them. I've received others, forwards from commissioners and from staff as I've maintained the correspondence folder.
Okay. Thank you, Torrance. All right, so in similar fashion, I'm going to flip-flop between. So we're gonna start, well, first, we're gonna start with the applicant. Please come to the podium. Absolutely. Yes. For the record, the applicant is deferring their time. So first, in support, we have Sarah Sharp.
May I defer to speak at the end?
Yes, you may. You're not Sarah Sharp, are you?
No, I am. Sorry, I just, I'm in support for it, that's all.
Okay. Nothing more to say?
No.
All right. One down. In opposition, Whitney Bauer.
Hello, I'm Whitney, and I am here representing, there are six people that are involved and directly in the backyards of Goodwin's estate and connected to Goodwin Manor, so I'm representing those families here today, and I am one of those families. I've actually, we used our life savings to buy a property that's connected into the backyard of Goodwin Manor, and that's all we have is our property. So I'm actually here asking you today to deny this so that our property is not ruined. We have a current lawsuit that is pending against the Goodwins and Jennifer Mon. We don't know that you have copies. I have emailed them to you. Do you have those copies?
Yes.
Okay, so I have those if you need those, but, um, so our issues, I'm.
Commissioners that did not receive a copy of the materials?
I received a copy, but I'll still take a paper copy if you have an extra.
And so before we, before we get too deep into this, we do have opposition and support, and I wanna make sure that we give.
Sure, I'll be really quick.
So I'm gonna limit this to three minutes.
Okay, sure, I'll be really quick. We, um, this was brought up four years ago, and it was denied. We have only lived there for three years, but in the past three years that we've lived there, we've experienced them going against the zoning ordinances, have, have experienced the wedding events that have been happening there. If you like the music that they're playing at the events, then you can enjoy it by just standing in your backyard. If you do not like it, then you also have to endure it by standing in your backyard. It's, um, it sounds like it's really far away, but it's not far away. It's, we're in the country. We, um, like I said, saved all of our life savings to move out to the country, and so we want it to remain the country. The other major issue with this is that there is a one-lane road that is an easement that goes through our six-home subdivision that is being traversed by the guests of these events. There have been car accidents on this one-lane road. As a matter of fact, there is a, a fireman that I believe is here today that was going up the one, our, our one-lane road on Saturday to take his emergency vehicle to Goodwin and used our side of the easement. This one-lane road, you can't, if you're on the one-lane road, that's the only way into our houses. That is the only way we can get into our driveways. It is the only way we can exit our driveways. So if there are photos with Santa, weddings, culinary events, if there are charitable events and people are traversing that one-lane road, our six families cannot leave our house and we cannot get to our house. It is one lane. There's no place to exit off the one lane. I sent you all photos of that road, um, but that is a huge issue. They're going to say that they don't use the one lane, but they do. They have historically, over this past four years, they have used it, and the only people that have the key to the gate that they built for the one-lane road is them. They have the right to open, according to the easement, their invitees are legally allowed to use that easement. So this would actually just decimate our rights to use our homes, to come and go from our homes. So pending this litigation, I respectfully ask that you either defer voting or vote no today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up in support, we have Mr. Philip Proter.
Thank you, guys, and ladies. I am here in support of Jennifer and Andrea and their families. Brief history for me, my family moved into this area in, in Ferndale in nineteen sixty-nine. We've been a staple there for a long time. Myself, I've spent the majority of my life there other than being around college time. So I have invested a lot in my community. Matter of fact, I've got a community park that I'm working with Plasky County right now to have built at the corner of the foyer right there. With that said, what I love about that is the history of, of the Goodwins and what they've given back to the community has been awesome. I mean, my family has gone up there for family pics. We've been invited up there numerous times for other things, for solar eclipses, and I know I'm not the only one. There's a lot of people in our community that have that ability. These guys reach out to lots of folks and love helping people and getting people up there. There are a lot of other venues in the area that are similar to what they're wanting to do, and actually, matter of fact, they have more people and more events. We've got Kraus Farms, Cold Springs Event Center, Pfeiffer Camp and Fern Cliff Camp all within just a few miles of there. These places have hundreds and thousands of people coming there monthly, yearly. What I do love all of those, I mean, they bring people into the community, people learn about our community and able to see the, the beauty that we have there. Like I said, the Goodwins open their home all the time for people and a lot of different things. It's wonderful. I do wanna touch on what the, uh, uh, lady said here. I am also a chief of West Plasky Fire Department. Been there for almost eight years. The only reason we ever use that entrance is for emergency reasons. We did use that entrance the other day simply to find out what apparatus we can get up that mountain. That, other than that, we're not going up there with our apparatus for any reason whatsoever unless it's an emergency. Just wanted to state that. But again, I, I have not got the opportunity to really meet Jennifer and Brian yet, but I've heard nothing but fantastic things from people that I know that know them, and the Goodwins obviously are, love these guys, and I vouch for the Goodwins, so I gotta vouch for these guys. And I would love to see what they're gonna be able to offer the community if this gets approved. It's, it's just gonna go right into everything else that we love about our community being, bringing people into these special events, getting people to see our area. So just appreciate you guys' time, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have in opposition, Ms. Deborah Reynolds.
Hello, I'm not a public speaker either, so I'm get a little bit nervous, but I am Deborah Reynolds, and I own five acres east of the Goodwin home. My property line is about thirty feet from their road, and beyond that is their front yard. That area is where they park all of the cars for their events, and it is covered with grass. Goodwin Manor is a big operation located within a subdivision that is zoned R two for residential use only. All of the property around them is residential as well. The Goodwins claim to host up to two hundred people, not including the family, all the staff, catering and many other, others involved in an event. Their venue is a nuisance to their neighbors, especially those of us who live next to them. Most events are outdoors and very loud with bands and music, and the music echoes all over the mountain, down to the surrounding valleys. They have vehicles driving up and down their narrow road. Now, their entrance might be fifty feet, but the road is not. And the headlights shine into all the surrounding homes and onto my property as well. I have planned to build my retirement home there, and I've owned the land for a long time. Not only is noise and lights a concern, but living in a rural area, we only have private wells and septic tanks. They are all designed specifically for a family home. I do not know how the Goodwins can accommodate over two hundred or more guests. This could possibly cause environmental issues with our nearby Little Maumell River. And another big concern is fire. The private road leading up to the top of the mountain is basically one lane with switchbacks. If there was a fire during one of their events, I do not know how the volunteer fire department get up the road with their emergency vehicles while guests are trying to leave on the long, narrow road. This is the second time the Goodwins have applied for commercial approval. They were turned back down in the past by the planning commission in night, in twenty nineteen. They were denied by the board of directors in twenty twenty and rejected by the Board of Adjustment for Home Occupancy in twenty twenty-one. The city of Little Rock told them cease and desist, as did Judge Wendell Griffin. To my knowledge, that has not ever happened, and they still continue to have weddings and events. We all have financial hardships during our lifetime, but we don't expect to pay for them at the expense of our neighbors and community. I am vehemently against P C D filed as Z ninety-five-C, Jennifer Mon, Andrea and Gary Goodwin becoming a commercial entity. I would like to thank the planning commission for your attention and time on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up in support, we have Mr. Bennett Privet.
Thank you for our time to speak for you today. My name is Bennett Pruitt. We live, my wife Julie and I live at one oh one Thalata Circle in Little Rock, seven-two-two-two-three. I'm here to, as, as an honor, to talk about Brian and Jennifer Mon and their six wonderful children. From a credibility of character standpoint, the, the fire gentleman said that he doesn't know them very well. Well, that's the reason I'm here to talk in favor of this rezoning, because I think that the neighbors need to understand who they are as well, and that process is just becoming evident because this has happened in such a fast period of time. But I'm here to say, we've known that family for twenty years. We've been in church with them for this period of time, they were in our community group at church. Their credibility and integrity are second to none, and they really want to be good neighbors in this area. I think when people get to know them well. I think when people get to know them well, they will find out that what they say, they, they honor what they say to be the truth and will conduct themselves in a very professional way, uh, with regard to how they would carry on some of these occasional events. This is gonna be their primary home. Uh, they, they have a large family. They're out of space there. They need to move. But part of Jennifer's background is that she wants to hold these events for the, for the betterment of our community and also for charity as well. In fact, in the last, uh, few months, uh, is, she's actually been working with CarTide, for example, and they've raised over several tens of thousands of dollars, and she's done that throughout her time here in the last several years. Uh, she's a graduate of the, uh, Plasky Tech Culinary School. Uh, she's, she's really involved with that. She's also been working to try to improve her culinary skills with some training internationally and, and nationally. Uh, so she can have a, a future doing that, but that would be somewhere else, not there, as they said before. The restaurant situation would be elsewhere. So this is their home, their primary home, but they will try to be a charitable group for, for them, uh, for various organizations. And, um, I, I will just say that, uh, to the people who are concerned about some of these issues, Jennifer and Brian will be able to work well with the details and compromise in any way they can to make sure that the neighborhood is gonna be properly according to co- uh, ordinances and laws. And furthermore, th- they want to be respected as part of that neighborhood. Uh, they, this is, this is where they want to live. This is, they're excited about going there. And so I'm just trying to make a point here that their, their integrity and their good name really comes before a lot of these things, and I, I'm here to testify that they are honorable people and they are, they're very honest and they want to work well with these details as, as we go forward. And, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, uh, I just want to state that I have some reservations about even hearing. I was speaking with the city attorney, the attorney. There, there's an open case in Circuit Court about this. Uh, and so I just want to express my concerns by even hearing, um, this item today with an open case active.
Uh, well, uh, let's let the city attorney, uh, address it first.
Uh, Acting Chair, I just reviewed the complaint. And unlike group homes where I say there is no discretionary authority at all sometimes not to approve something, in regards to the complaint, I think you would have a rational basis to hear it because it would ultimately go to the board and then Tom and I could further review it. And then if they needed to defer, they could defer at the board level. But as Commissioner Person said, also, we would have a rational basis just to say, look, a lawsuit has been filed. It's within the jurisdiction of the Circuit Court. We don't want to rule on this because this is a subject matter of, since I've reviewed it, it is the subject matter of what they're applying for. So I'm gonna leave it up to the commission because ultimately it's gonna have to go before the board, and if Tom needs them to defer, they can. But you also have a rational basis to say, look, this is in the Circuit Court's jurisdiction. We don't feel comfortable voting on this. So...
Uh, well, I would say personally for me, I feel more than comfortable hearing the application. They've, they've met the notice requirements. They've met the, the burden to be heard by this body. We are not the Circuit Court. Whether or not this plays out in the Circuit Court and an, or another court of competent jurisdiction is not our business. Our business is the zoning ordinance and whether or not the application as it's presented uh, is, is appropriate within the bounds of what we are allowed to review.
I would support that position.
Yeah, I would, I would say the same thing, Mr. Chair. And I think it's, I think it's worth hearing even though there is pending litigation in the Circuit Court. Um, I did have one question of the, those in op, those in support who are coming up to the podium. I'm, I'm looking on Google Earth and I see very few homes near this location. But then there's like thirty people in support of this. So I don't know, you, you obviously don't live in this neighborhood, so it's rare for, it's rare for those in support of something to not live in that neighborhood and have a vested interest right there in that geography. So, um, if you would, as you come up, whether you're in support or opposition, if you'd state your address, if you could give us some perspective on how far away from this property you live? If you, if you live in North Little Rock, I will weigh that with less, you know what I mean? It, it won't be as important as the person who lives right next door. That's typically the way we would look at that. So that's just a comment.
Thank you. Uh, let's see.
I just wanted to bring up one thing. So if, um, Commissioner Person is not comfortable hearing or comfortable voting, that drops it down more votes. So, um, we would be at six exactly, I believe?
Well, the applicant has already stated that they would like to proceed, so, I mean, we're not gonna give them a third chance.
Right, but at that time it was seven.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. McDonald, but i- if I'm, if I heard correctly at the beginning, Ms. McDonald, you def, you refused yourself. Sean, is this, can, is it, is a discussion item that Ms. McDonald is bringing up, can she weigh in on this? If she's already deferred from?
No.
Okay.
And, and we're allowing someone, actually sometimes commissioners, if they have a conflict, will actually leave the room. We don't require that, but honestly.
It wasn't related to the, I, it was just related to the fact that?
The, the numbers. I understand Commissioner McDonald.
I will not say anything else.
So I would say unless there's any more discussion about that, we can proceed.
I'm gonna echo the sentiment of Commissioner Person. I'm also concerned about this, especially with the restricted covenants, but... And this is a legal issue. In the Planning Commission, we can make the decision we make, but all of these things should be noted.
And have been. Any other discussion? Okay. Um, let's see. Uh, we had support, so now we are on to opposition. Uh, Ms. Julie, gosh, I hope I get this right, Favorite?
So, Commissioners, um, thank you.
Name, address, and proximity to the property.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
So I lived on Reynolds Mountain the four years that we went through the, the Board of Adjustments, the applications for, um, hey, somebody left their phone.
I'm sure they'll find it back.
Okay. Anyway, I lived out there for four years when all this went on, and I've been before the board, before with, in this room with the Board of Adjustments. And, um, I, right now I moved back into town and I lived with Deb Reynolds on Lot Four. And Deb is going to build another home on Lot Six. And I'm the one, I have lots of information and pictures of this large event center. And, um, my interest is, um, moving back out there. And right now I do live in Little Rock at 62 Taylor Park Loop, which is in West Little Rock. So, um, I'm part of the future home out there, and I have a vested interest in this. May I talk?
Uh, you have been, yes. The word is yours.
Well, I didn't know if I got to, was able to continue. All right. So, um, Planning Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. And my name is Julie Favorite, and I'm here today in opposition to rezoning Goodwin's property to PCD, commercial property. There are so many reasons why this will, um, hopefully never qualify for PCD zoning. You will hear more details from other speakers this afternoon. Three big concerns I have are decrease in pop, uh, the value of property. I have looked that up, you know, and done some homework on how living near an event center will decrease the property. And it is a fire trap right now. Um, if someone threw a cigarette out at night and it smoldered, it's very windy up there. It's very dry. It could, it could be a disaster, and there's only, there is only one way in, one way out. My other concern is?
Ma'am, ma'am, I would, I would ask if we could, this is for both support and opposition, if we can?
Speed it up.
If we can limit our con, comments to factual things.
Okay, well.
Would be, could be, should be, might.
Okay. When you live up there and you see all the people and you know the one-way roads in and out, um, it is pretty factual that it could be a disaster. That's all, that's all I'm saying. All right, so I'll move on. Um, anyway, I'll move to this. All right. Since this application is basically, some of the application from 2020 Planning Commission and Board of Directors should have a lot of information pertaining to this request. It seems clear to me that this property is part of an ETJ. And the same rules apply for, um, zoning and, um, following the ordinances apply to the property in an ETJ. The cease and desi- desist was issued in 2020. And I understand it's difficult to enforce this because the property is hidden from the street. No one knows what truly goes on on top of the mountain. They have not stopped having events or weddings. The Planning Commission made many recommendations to the Goodwins on their first and second application for rezoning. My point is, to fulfill the requirement set forth by the Planning Commission, it would be very expensive undertaking widening the road. And I will say that Mickey Smith owns the property to the east of the Goodwin's gate. And he, I have the notes for, he talked to Stotler at the time because it had been said that, uh, the Smiths would sell part of their property to the Goodwins for widening the road. I spoke with him last week, and he said he will never sell any of his property to the Goodwins to widen the road. And so I don't know where that will go, but they could not be here today. They're in Hot Springs at a funeral. So he, I got his permission to relay that to you all. Anyway, I do, you know, I, I do want to make a comment. I've heard all the folks talk in favor of, of this, and this isn't about their character or, or anything like that. This has to do with putting a commercial property on a gated, in a gated community with the neighbors all around. It's not in the middle of eighty acres, and it does affect everyone around them. There is a neighbor here, um, that would like to speak probably, but he, um, you know, the people that are here that live right next to them are their friends. And I understand, you know, why they're speaking, going to speak in favor of them. But the people that, you know, just want to live peacefully and, you know, that's the reason we live out there and move out there, and 4H and all those other places are not in the ETJ. They're not in the middle of a gated subdivision and community. And so, re- respectfully, I would just, you know, like to ask that you not approve this um, and think about if you were a neighbor, you know, living near an event center. They have big plans for this, and it's, once it's approved, we know where, what that will mean. And I would like to also add, the neighbors that I spoke with, Kathy McConnell here is one of them, um, the Smiths, Michael Bowman, their property and on Canis, uh, Whitney's neighborhood, did not receive a certified letter that this was even going to take place. Deb did receive one, but it was sent to the wrong address. We found out last Thursday about this. And none of the other folks, they would like to be here, but they didn't know about it, and it was short notice. And also?
Ms. Favorite, I'm sorry, we're running really short on time.
I'm sorry. I just have a lot to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, just a quick clarification for the record, staff. Uh, all property owners within two hundred feet were duly notified as is required by the ordinance.
Yes, sir. Per the ownership search, there are five landowners listed, one of them being Gary Goodwin. The other four, uh, Hoag, First National Bank, Reynolds Living Trust, Deborah Reynolds Living Trust, and CGI Goodwin are on the ownership search, and there are four notified, certified, excuse me, mail receipts. So per the ownership search at two hundred feet, two hundred foot search was, was, uh, adhered to, and the notification is correct.
Great. Thank you.
The, excuse me, Ms. Chairman, the applicant is required to submit a notice two hundred feet, uh, from the boundary of the property. The city supplements that, that area by another one hundred feet. So the applicant is only required to do a two hundred foot notice, notification search. The city sends it out another hundred feet for a total of three hundred feet.
Thank you. So as you can imagine, just to clarify for all those present, with a property this big and in a neighborhood this size, there are simply not that many people to notify. It's sort of a catch-22 when you have to set a limit on something as the city, um, that certain people are simply not gonna be notified within the neighborhood. Uh, so we have opposition. Ms. Favorite, thank you so much. Uh, next, we have Ms. Julie Pruitt. And Ms. Pruitt, that might be your husband's cellphone up there. And to be respectful of everybody's time, I, I don't want to cut anybody short. I know others have had more time, but if we can?
Yes. No, I will be very, very quick, and we appreciate, uh, your time. Uh, I am, uh, for the Mon family, um, to have this property, and I will say quickly, when they talk about, uh, events, like a vent center, that's not what they plan to have as an event center. Um, I want to let you know that I am for the Mon family, and for you passing this for them, I'm gonna defer my time to some people that are neighbors and live out in that area and, and they can, uh, speak better about the, the close proximity of neighbors. But I can assure you that the Mon family will be very respectful for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Sorry? Yeah. Um, all right. Moving right along. Next, we have opposition, Marita Priest.
Hello. My name's Marita Priest, uh, 3220 Garrison Road. Um, the property is located just under the last house that Deborah, uh, sold and moved from. Uh, so it's kind of down the ravine from the top of the mountain where, uh, Goodwin Manor sits. And, um, the noise from the music and cars and things come down the ravine, and you can hear it very well. I'm not gonna go over all the things that they have already said. No reason to bring that up. But this is just deja vu. We've been here before, you know, and it's just frustrating. Um, it's a nuisance to the neighborhood. My elderly father lives there. He's eighty-three. I think it was last weekend, the traffic was backed up all the way to Ferndale Cut Off, and he lives right next to Ferndale Cut Off there. Um, we've seen wrecks right there. People run the stop sign, go clean across the road and down in the ditch through the fence. Uh, whether it's directly related to vents there, I'm not sure, uh, but that is a dangerous intersection there. He does still drive, which is very concerning whenever there's so much traffic. And it's just a nuisance in the neighborhood with all the noise and the traffic, for sure. The road is very dangerous going up to, uh, the manor. Has a very sharp, uh, switchback. If you were to meet an emergency vehicle going up that drive, there's no place to go. I'm not sure how you would even move over to let an emergency vehicle go up that drive if you were to meet one oncoming. So a lot of concerns there for safety, um, function in the neighborhood for the wells. City water is on the way. Don't know when that'll get there, but there's a lot of concerns. But there's a lot of concern about how it would actually function. If you start approving commercial here, it's possibly going to snowball, fall like dominoes. One commercial here, one commercial there, and the next thing you know, you have commercial properties everywhere. This is a residential area. We want it to stay residential. And when you have a commercial zone, it can blow up really quick. Yeah, you may not intend for it to be this or that, but before you know it, it could snowball and you end up having something really, really large that you didn't intend to. My family's been in that area for over a hundred and fifty years. I've seen it grow. And I've can't believe some of the things that have happened out there now, so. Uh, I am opposed to it and I would hope that you, as a commission, would take all of this into consideration and also be opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Respectfully, sir, I'm the, I'm the current property owner and my daughter attends the University of Arkansas as well as my two children. We were not even in Little Rock, Arkansas last weekend. And the only person I had in attendance is a registered nurse who dogs had my five rescue animals. And his name is, I can give you his home phone number, he can be a witness. That was the only singular person that I had stuck in my home. He would have been at Baptist Hospital from seven AM to seven PM until I'd be get report and then he would have been coming home. There was no one at our home last weekend. But it might have been the weekend before. There's been no one at our home.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's, let's not get into a, uh, argument a bit. Um, so the next two cards are Brian and Sharon Mon. I'm guessing you're family of- Well, we'll make that assumption, yes, thank you. Um, all right, so moving on to, uh, support, Jessica Boswell.
Hello, you guys tired yet? So, um, my name is Jessica Boswell and I live at one-one-eight-four-three twelfth Street, um, parent address, so about ten miles, uh, from this particular property. Um, we did some extensive searching whenever we were, um, getting ready to move there. Um, and kind of knew, you know, what we were buying next to. So, um, I just really have a hard time conceptionalizing folks that are trying to rationalize the fact that they didn't know that it existed as long as the, the Goodones have owned that property. But, um, prior to that, we lived in Roland, um, directly across the road from P. Allen Smith. And so, I'm sure everybody's very familiar with that particular property. Um, great properties, very similar, um, advantageous, um, ideas to, to bring to Goodwin. And, um, we never once had any issues, um, living there. Neighborhood very similar to this. Um, and I just think finally, very in support of this, um, particular, um, not event center, I don't believe it's actually been classified as such. But, um, you know, we moved to the country because we don't want the city telling us what to do, right? Um, I just find it fascinating that those folks who moved to the country now want your support to help change something, um, when they actually don't want your support to do anything else.
Thank you. All right. So, I am going to read this one last, uh, second to last support card because they, uh, said that they prefer not to speak, but it is, um, Mr. John McInnes who is in support. And we'll move on to the last opposition card, Ms. Catherine McConnell.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
The opposition has used up their fifteen-minute time.
Uh, yeah, I understand, we literally have one card each on each side, so we'll, we'll give them a little latitude.
Hello, Kathy McConnell. I'm in opposition, I'm sorry. Okay, I live on Ferndale Cut Off. And their property, what they're speaking of, my property back of it kind of backs up to theirs. And I'm in opposition because, I don't know, first of all, that's a residential area, it's not a commercial area. And if you open it up to one thing, there's a lot of other commercial properties that's going to want to go in.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And our final support card, Ms. Karistiana Hoi. You hungry?
My name is Christina, I live at twelve Waldenwood Lane, which is about three miles from the property. Um, it's actually very close to Wildwood. So, I'm very familiar with living with an event center close by. I also own property on Nichols Loop Road, which is one point nine miles away, and on Striper Lane, um, which is less, it's about two and a half miles away.
Excuse me, ma'am, can we get you to step up to the mic a little bit, please?
Yes. Um, I just want to say I am in support for this property, um, and for what they want to do with it. Uh, I own a real estate company and I know that the Goodones bought out there a long time ago before the, um, extraterritorial zoning was in place. And I think a lot of these neighbors are just right outside of that boundary. So, I would think within the next couple of years, they would be inside that boundary and would have to come up here if they wanted to change any kind of, uh, just what they want to do with their property, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, and now finally, the moment we've all been waiting for.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the house closest, I did not sign up to speak.
And I'm sorry, if you didn't fill out a green card-
Well, here, here's my, here's my reasoning is-
I'm sorry, sir, no.
Because we had enough and then he says he's not giving way to it.
Sir, sir, it's, thank you.
I'm just saying, I'd have an opportunity if it's not-
If you had filled out a card, we would love to give you the opportunity to speak.
I will say that in my presentation, if we can bring that up, and Brian, please. Um, we just have a map that we would like to show you so you can get a clear vision of what we're talking about. Go ahead, please, um, can you pass it around, a map? And can you give me an idea of how long I have to speak? I was hoping for ten minutes.
Uh, let's, let's be nice and say seven.
Okay, thank you. Um, so first of, first of all, my name is Jennifer Mon. My husband Brian and I are here to represent the application and you see that, that Gary and Andrea are here. Um, they built the estate twenty-five years ago. Um, our family has been looking for acreage in, in Ferndale because our children go to Chanel Elementary and Joe T. Robinson schools. They have always been in public school and so we didn't want to have to move them away. But we were looking for a place where as a chef, I could welcome people to my home and cook them a nice dinner and gather small groups in intimate settings on acreage. And then, our six children who are ages four to fourteen could roam and run and play. And so, that's what we've been looking for and we found that with Goodwin Manor. And I wish that this application be, could be called a secondary use permit because it is, it has been and it absolutely will be in the future a, a first and foremost, a primary residence where I raise my children, where I put my four-year-old to bed at night. I would not be pursuing this property if I wanted to hold weddings. I don't want to deal with brides, I'm being honest. That is not my cup of tea. I am a chef who loves to entertain, who has already held countless, uh, chef dinners and lunches for people across the city of Little Rock to much high acclaim in, in their enjoyment of that. And I want to be able to do that at this location. Um, and so, I, just a little bit about us, we have lived in West Plasky County for twenty years. Um, we, um, attend school at Plasky County Special School District. My husband spent seven years as a volunteer on the Plasky County School Board because we care about our community and our neighbors and the children that are being raised in our very hometown in our neighborhoods. I have spent ten years dedicated volunteer in elementary, middle school, high school, serving everywhere from a homeroom mom to a football. I feed the football team every week. Um, and the Backpack School Program, fundraising for the school. Um, and then we attend church locally and we have a huge heart for serving in multiple charities that benefit the state of Arkansas. As I mentioned, I'm a certified chef and I had the blessing to be a finalist on the show Master Chef with Gordon Ramsay, which gave me this amazing platform to be able to help others. And so, just in the last year, I've been able, been able to raise a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars by donating chef dinners, some of which Andrea opened her home for free, did not benefit from it all to allow me to do that. And we were able to support organizations like Arkansas Food Bank, Potluck Food Rescue, The Call for Foster Care, Arkansas Advocates for Children and Families, Car Tie, Twentieth Century Lodge, Heart Hospital, um, Baptist Health, and many more, you know, Women's Own Worth, serving victims of domestic abuse. We just raised twenty thousand dollars for them with one of my donated dinners. Goodwin Manor is a gem for the state of Arkansas and for Little Rock. It was built by Arkansas artisans with Arkansas flagstone. Even the iron work on the Manor was done by a Joe T. Robinson family, father and son. So, it is truly a gem that we want to respect, is nestled in over a hundred acres. So, you have a map that you can see, you can see in this photo on my first, I don't ha, I don't know how to do the slides, but you can see the photo, all the, the terrain here that's, that's wooded. Um, and so, you can see some of the work, you can go to the next slide, of these craftsmen that have built this very unique home. And, um, and it's for entertaining. And events in the past have been held outside on the lawn and surrounded by trees and inside occasionally for small groups in the great hall and wine cellar. The rest of the estate is private, fourteen thousand square foot estate. The rest of it is private and reserved for the residents. So, we want to grow, as a chef, I want to grow seasonal produce and eventually add a greenhouse where I can raise seedlings and, and winter produce and herbs. We're excited about raising honeybees and much to his dismay, chickens. But mama needs chickens for six babies, okay? Um, but, so we'll need a small barn to house equipment. We plan to share our bounty at the Ferndale Farmer's Market. So, when it sells, and when it says retail component, this is not an event center with a retail component. This is us growing something to share with our neighbors and our community. Similar to what P. Allen Smith does in Moss Mountain, we want to hold limited, very small gatherings, mostly in the daytime because again, at night, I'm, we're running to a football game after this. We're doing baseball games, we're with our kids, you know, for cheer and dance. And so, we're spending our night times with our family. And so, what we're saying is we would limit any outdoor evening events to ten to twelve to fifteen a year at best. I actually expect that to be much smaller. But I want to do daytime events, like we said in our application. And to offer culinary and garden workshops where I can use my passion for supporting foster children and disadvantaged youth and bring them up to have like a Master Chef workshop. How fun and rewarding would that be to bring the community together to do that? Um, again, we have operating hours where actually it says nine AM to ten PM, but my hours would be respectful and that would be ten AM to nine PM. And again, this is not every weekend, not every weeknight. This is a handful of events in a year because it's a primary residence as the first use. And only events, limited, small events as a secondary use. And I want to say that a lot of, um, what came down to some of the, some, well, let me just say, I do feel like twenty twenty should not be considered by the board because a citizen is allowed, right, every year to be able to come before you all again to petition for rezoning. And so, I do want to say, even though, um, it, it may have been designed, it may have been declined at the Planning Committee, um, then, the city board actually voted for four, they voted yes for, they had more votes for yeses, but they didn't have a quorum. So, that's why it didn't pass, it didn't fail because they didn't have the votes, they didn't have the quorum. But I will say, we have had a full fire inspection and I've gone above and beyond to address all of their concerns. And the only reason why we use the easement with a fire truck is because the fire, the fire chief said that we want to test both roads to see which one is the best for access points for all neighbors at the top. Do you know they've never done that? So, we instigated that for the benefit of the entire neighborhood on top of that mountain. And now we know both roads, they took a fire truck up yesterday. Both roads have access points. Um, also, your map there shows the PCDs that are around. And this is one of my biggest points. Um, the neighborhood that is, has brought a suit. Let me tell you, that suit is based on an injunction to stop events. It's not, it's also based on it being a residential property. So, what I beg of you is to give us a yes vote today. Let it go to the city board to consider this, this zoning as, whether it be residential or, again, secondary use, commercial. We're not building an event center. We simply want to hold limited events for small groups of people. And so, you know, it says up to two hundred people, but in the past, they rarely had events for over a hundred and twenty-five. And my, my thought is for these educational workshops and garden tours, et cetera, would it be more like forty to eighty? And so, um, there would be very little times in the year where we would even have up to a hundred and twenty-five up there. Um, so, uh, another thing about the road, um, the road can be widened and she mentioned Mickey, we do not have to buy property from anywhere, anyone to ro, to widen the road, um, to the fire, um, chief's specifications. He has confirmed that with us and we're already getting quotes on that. Um, also, some of the neighbors that they mentioned, um, they told us if we would get rid of that easement down Canis, that they would actually support this PCD. The very people that have now filed, served us papers, when I came in the door today, I hadn't even seen it. I got served when I walked in the door today. Those people told us, and I have written record that says, if you abandon your easement, the easement that a fire truck comes up to save my family in the event of a fire, or save the other, the, the-
Ma'am, ma'am, it's her, it's her turn to speak, thank you.
That also would protect the other neighbors, including, including Ms. Deborah's property. That fire truck coming up that easement would protect all of these people right here, sitting here, that live next by. Also, as, can we go to the end, to the neighbor?
What about protecting the resident?
Yes, you was well, you was well, Whitney. You've been a friend for twenty years, I care about you.
Ms. Ms. Mon.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Mon, let's address the commission.
So, you have, thank you, you have here some of the neighbors that didn't sign up cards. You have their written statements of support. I beg of you to read these. The first few are for the neighbors that live closest by. These neighbors here, the Hoags and Diane and Jan, who I'm not sure she's in attendance, but the first four of these, maybe five, are literally neighbors right next door. So, you have their words of support for the way that we want to use this. And I, I promise you, we will not send any guests down their easement road. It is padlocked, there is now a huge gate. In my presentation, you can see a photo of the huge gate that, um, keeps people, that gate on the bottom, see that gate on the bottom? Um, it is padlocked, it now has a fire lock on it as well for access, for safety. And we have given those neighbors a key to that in case they need it for emergency exit. They actually have keys.
All right, Ms. Mon, we're gonna, we're gonna open it up to commission discussion now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, do I sit down?
Uh, you can, in case any of the commissioners have questions, yeah.
Sorry, I'm so passionate about this.
Okay. Um, any commissioners have, uh, questions for the applicant? And, uh, just before we get started, I do want to limit any, uh, back and forth with, um, any public in support or opposition by the commission. I think their words have all been heard. And if we can keep things as consistent and concise as possible, that would be great.
Chair, I have a que, this, this may be more of staff than, so, um, what, what I'm hearing some describe, you're, you're describing events at your home. You have a big home, so that's a dinner party, you can have a dinner party at your home. What, what is triggering the need for the PCD? Is that because she's opening those to the public and charging a fee? Is that what that trig, I mean, what, what triggers? Because everyone can have a, a party at their house, right?
Commissioner Hart, that's, that's exactly what we were, we were thinking. I mean, when we were going over this, it was almost that we were going to suggest to Ms. Mon to, to rezone it to Ag. Because that's almost exactly when she was describing it to us, that's what it was sounding like. But, having the, the small events that she's, that she's going to be having, uh, over the course of the year, um, that led us to, you know, to move it into that, the-
But I mean, as Commissioner Hart said, I mean, I, I own a relatively decent-sized house in Pettaway. I can throw as many charitable dinners as I want to and, I mean, I can line both sides of every street that surrounds my house. I don't need a PCD.
These, these were thoughts that we were, we, we shared with each other. Ticketed events, we thought that, you know, just being on the safe side, that's what we would. But again, we, we struggled with whether it should be that because when Ms. Mon approached us, the residential aspect of this was something that was stressed and I think that you, you heard that tonight, that was very much stressed with us. And I think that you heard that tonight. That was very much stressed with us. And so as a staff, we probably talked about it for about a week. And this is where we came out on it. If the commissioners disagree with staff, we will certainly concur with that.
Can I ask a follow-up question, just related?
Sure.
Just for my clarification with city code. So as someone who lives in a residence but owns a business that then would charge, you know, we do sales tax and all that. We report all of that, but that would charge for people coming, you know, to pay for their meal, you know? Is that against?
I think there are, I think that's obviously outside of this body, but there are provisions in the code for residential-based businesses. Yeah, there are some triggers based on size, number of employees, whether they're, you know, parking, et cetera, et cetera. But that would be outside of this body.
Yeah, that was the reason for my question, just because this sort of is straddling the line between a business and just a lot of big dinner parties. And so I don't know if legal wants to weigh in on that or what really triggers that. But with a home, so if you lived on the golf course at Chenal and your home was of a certain size, you would have big events, right? A big Christmas party in that home. So what is the...
It depends whether it's profitable or not. I mean, if you have a big home and invite everyone for free, no problem. But if you're renting out your home for a wedding event or you're having charitable events and charging them, you know, it goes with... That's a commercial business.
Well, but if it's a charitable event and you're charging for donations, that's...
Well, but they're renting weddings as well.
Well, no, she said she's not.
Well, I said in the application, just to be clear, because when we started asking our family members to pray about this, my cousin got engaged and said, could we have a wedding in front of your home if it all works out in June? And so what I don't want is, we have, it's come to our attention that there are cameras on the driveway of this property and that the neighbors have been watching via game cameras, the traffic coming back and forth. And so what I don't want is to have a family member's wedding and not have stated it here that that might be an option. That's why I limited 12 to 15 outdoor evening events. So that way, if a few of those were family members asking to be married there, I wouldn't have complaints or the city calling me or a cease and desist.
Can I ask a question of the applicant, Chair?
Sure, please.
Are you charging for any of these events? Not charitable, but just outright charging for any of these events? If I wanted to rent Goodwin Estates for a wedding, are you charging me?
Yes.
You have to go through a...
Okay.
Yes. I mean, same for like if it were a corporate workshop where they wanted to do a culinary workshop with me for corporate training or development. Same thing. There would be a fee involved.
So that's the trigger. Okay. Yep, got it. Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I've got a couple. I mean, you've already answered the wedding question, although I think, you know, the city attorney, I think if it's like a family and you're not charging, that doesn't fall into it. But you said you want to deal with brides, but then this is where my concern is. What you described in your voice sounds fairly reasonable. When I look at the application, I'm seeing, you know, weddings up to 12 to 15 a year. I'm seeing, you said 40 to 80, but the application shows 81 parking spaces. So what's in the application, what's written, sounds a lot bigger, which I think is driving the concerns from neighbors. Versus what you told us. So where does it really fall? That's where my heartburn is, aside from the lawsuit, which is off the table, so.
That's a great question. So when we were all discussing as a committee, what they wanted to know, what would be the max? That's what we need to define here. And so for 200 people, you know, they told us you would need 80 parking spaces. So then we look at the space, you know, provided and figure out, okay, there is room for 80 parking spaces. So that's where that conversation came out. But truly, the events that we've discussed, like he's like, we're not having a bunch of weddings, just so you know. We are not having a bunch of weddings. So this is, like, if you can envision Moss Mountain, garden tours, a workshop on how to make a flower arrangement, how to make macarons, how to make bread, you know, a day spent with a master chef on how to harvest, you know, your food and then make a recipe with it, you know what I mean?
Look, my wife follows your stuff online, so I'm very aware of...
I'm just saying, but I want you to get a picture for what...
I have a picture, but I guess my concern is, when you think about this, there's a line between opening your home for a small group of people, which is what you verbally described. And then there's a big event that negatively impacts your neighbors, which is what's in writing, and what's in writing carries over if, say, you've bought a bigger amount of things. I guess that's where my concern is with what's on the writing, because that's what comes with it. So help me understand that difference, because that's where my heartburn is right now.
Okay. Could we, if we limited that to what I truly expect, which would be no more than 150, 125? I mean, is that, I mean, if we limit it in writing?
So in that instance, and I think the city attorney is going to agree with, what he knows I'm about to say, I would recommend deferring the application. Rewrite the application not for this, but for what you actually plan to do with the property. You know, we all want to sort of, not necessarily shoot for the moon, but say, you know, this is what could happen. But could've, would've, should've, never should've. And so I think if you come back, limit that scope with a deferral, then I think there's a more productive discussion to be had. Because the last thing we want is, we don't want to sit here making notes and having you amend the application from the podium. That's never going to be a good thing.
If I can make an addition, I would encourage you as a commissioner to connect with the neighbors who are opposed.
As an applicant.
I'm saying as a commissioner to the applicant.
Oh, yeah.
I did try. I did.
I know, but I'm saying this, again, I'll just tell you, like those commissioners, if the staff recommends approval, there's no opposition, boom, go through. I think there's a lot of different, and having on the receipt, you end up changing like this before as an old landowner, it makes me a little nervous. But to the degree that you can, I would encourage you, this is not a requirement, Sean, but this is an encouragement to work with the more...
Can I just say two more things to address that? So I did reach out to as many neighbors as possible. Many neighbors in the neighborhood group that served us papers today said if we would abandon the easement, they were in support. We offered to get a written statement, addendum to the easement that stated no commercial traffic will ever come this way. We will reserve this for fire protection for our family and the other people on top of the mountain. Okay, one thing. And the other thing for you all to consider is at the bottom of the neighborhood, that the neighborhood group here, that entrance and their borders, it borders Ferndale Camp that offers outdoor weddings, that probably was that music that person heard last weekend, that offers conferences up to 200, 1,600 campers border their exit. I started on your map, that's Ferncliff. They're closer to Ferncliff than Goodwin Manor by acres. Why aren't they here protesting Ferncliff? Why can't we in our 80...
They already have a commercial use.
I know, but why can't we in our 80 acres be up here and be respectful, loving neighbors, you know? I did also implore them to wait and see. Let me show you. We'll keep it locked. We'll keep this road locked. Let me show you what our vision is. And we got served today.
I think it does sound, based on what you've described, there may be a reasonable path forward. But I think based on your description here, with such a material change to what's presented, I do believe it would be better to defer, revise the application and come back next month.
So we can come back next month?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate you hearing all of our thoughts.
I'll ask a question.
Sure.
Compare yours to the one, the other one that you were just mentioning, the other one that the...
Ferncliff?
Ferncliff.
Ferncliff?
No, Moss Farm.
Oh, Moss Mountain?
Moss Mountain.
Very similar. They hold garden tours throughout the month that are only in the daytime. On their website, it says they limit outdoor evening wedding, outdoor evening events and weddings to 15 a year. Because again, he doesn't want weddings. They have up to 80 people at these lunch tours. And he doesn't offer the educational component that I want to do. In fact, I gave him that idea and he was like, that's a brilliant idea. I really should be doing that for my community. But it would be very similar in scope like that. And I will say, you know, we were just advised to go with those numbers for maximum, not only from fire, but also from the capacity of the water treatment center that's on site. It's designed to treat 200 people. So that's kind of why we started with those numbers. But in my presentation, that like the next slide over, maybe two slides, go to the operations, yes, it does say here in this, written for you all to see, that it would be hours of 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., sorry, I can't, I've got old eyes.
So that's where we have a small disconnect because this body, when we vote to approve, it's based on what's written in the application, not what you present. So if there's a disconnect, then we come up against you making modifications of the application from the podium, which we don't allow. So that's why I say it would be better to defer, revise that for what you think is actually reasonable, not what the capacity of the property is. Because you have five acres. You could pack 5,000 people in there if you wanted to and have a music festival. But revise that, limit it to what you plan to host.
Yes.
And come back in November, and I think there might be a more reasonable path forward for that.
Okay, thank you all. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes. So making a formal request to defer?
Yes, yes, please. I defer until next month.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we accept the applicant's request for deferral to put it on next month's agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald is recused. Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel?
Absent.
Commissioner Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers is absent. The application has been deferred to the November agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a restroom break, please?
No! What's wrong with you? Yes.
Thank you.
Break for five. You didn't wear your Depends today? You didn't wear your Depends today?
Okay.
All right, next item on your agenda is item 24, file number Z 10,046. This is King 1 STR 2 PDC located at 6415 R Street. The applicant proposes to rezone this property at 6415 R Street from R 4 to PDC to allow use of the property as a short-term rental 2 with a maximum stay of 29 days. The owner will not reside at the residence and the entire structure will be rented as one unit. The property is occupied by an 824 square foot, one-story, two-bedroom, one-bath house. There are two parking pads in front of the residence located in the public right-of-way. The applicant stated that there was no bill of assurance for this property. There have been no police reports or planning and development enforcement cases for this property. It has been in operation since 2021. There is an existing approved STR located adjacent to the property to the west and a new application, which is pending, located within a quarter mile of the site. Currently, the city of Little Rock has 106 approved short-term rentals, the STR 1s and 2s combined. And if we have discussed before, the city is allowing a maximum of 500 STRs. Staff is not supportive of this requested rezoning. Staff does not believe the request is reasonable and the proposed PDC is not appropriate for this location based primarily on the fact that we don't feel that parking is sufficient. Our street at this location is a very narrow street. The block across our street at the north has been redeveloped with new residences and driveways. And the applicant's plan is to utilize parking which is located almost entirely within the right-of-way. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the PDC zoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is the applicant present? Come to the podium, state your name for the record, please.
I'm Sarah King and I live at 5921 Amper Sand, which is about a half-mile away, might be on that map.
Okay. We do have two cards in support of this application. So if you would like to let them speak first and then come back to the podium, you're more than welcome to do that. Or if you'd like to give us any more details about your application at this time, you're welcome to do that as well.
I think one of the cards was mine and then the other is Brian.
Oh, okay. Well, you get to speak no matter what, so.
Hello, my name is Brian Harden. I live at 5921 Amper Sand Street here in Little Rock. Me and Sarah have owned this home at 6415 R Street for over four years. This home has been a short-term rental for the length that we have owned it. This home is a two-bedroom, one-bath, single-family home. We've hosted over 100 different families coming to this home throughout that it's been out, been there. This home has Ring cameras that face the parking area for this home. We monitor those cameras 24/7 for various reasons. One of those is parking. We want to be great stewards of the neighborhoods. We have our rentals in. We take parking very, very seriously. My guesting in our home has to accept the house rule that if they violate this house rule of parking, we have the right to cancel their reservation with no refund. This house rule allows them for parking two cars in the approved area that we have for parking that keeps their car out of the right-of-way of the road. Our angled parking allows two full-size cars to park without being in the street. I had two photos that I took on these, oh, there they are. Can you go back up? Yes, sir. There's a red car that's parked on the left-hand side of that street. That car is actually one of the neighbor's cars. That is the little gray car that's parked on the right-hand street. That's her daughter's car. We've spoken with her many a times. She's very grateful that we are able to park our cars so that her car, which is there in the picture, can back out easily into the street. If you scroll down, there's a picture of the Ring camera. Yep, there it is. So this is on the same day. Those are the two full-size cars that are backed in to this parking area. That allows for those, for them to not be out into the street. I've also attached two different Google Views of cars that are not these. If you go one more, yep, there is another view of, I don't, I guess that was in, I don't know what date that was, but that's a Google View street. And you can see that the cars are all the way up and out of the street, so there's not blocking any passage that comes through there. And then one more, if you scroll on up, yeah, there we go. This kind of shows the back end of the car where it doesn't show that it's in the street, which allows for the car across the street where the new area's been built to back out. And keep in mind, we're on the complete opposite side of the street. So if you scroll back up, there was a picture that had the 92 feet, yeah, this one. So our street is 92 yards long. And by the ordinance that we are doing for the STR 2s, it states that we have to have parking within 300, 300, I think it's 300 or 330 feet of the residence, which the whole length of our street does have street parking. But what we're doing is allowing our guests to not have their cars into the street. They're actually off the street. So with that being said, we're just trying to get support from, from everyone that will allow us to be able to do a short-term rental at this location. As we've been doing for the past four years, we've not had any complaints from any of the neighbors. We've not had any complaints from any of the guests having problems getting in and or out of the parking areas. And something that is a little confusing for us is we've been, we've been here before for other rentals. And there's also a house at 62 Old Valmar that is a short-term rental that's been passed, that's been approved. And they have no street par, I mean, all they have is street parking. They have no parking pads. And I don't know that I add that one. Yeah, right there. So that's 602 Valmar. We, this home here has no, it's just a straight-up hill. And then the next one would be from the street view. Yes, sir. That shows same area of a street that our street is when they're talking about the narrowness of a street. So if there is a car parked there, it's going to be the same scenario it would be there. I don't have any photos of it, but the other one would be 3501 Cabanole Boulevard. That's actually a two-story house, two-story residence that has zero parking as well and it's all street parking. So whenever we had news that we were in denial for this, or for the staff, it was very questionable on how come some are getting approved and then some are not. So that's why I went ahead and added all the photos and allowed us to be able to present that we do have parking that allows for guests to not have their cars into the street. So, and the other thing I would like to say is, you know, if they're talking about right-of-ways and everything to that effect, is every, you know, Monday through Thursday, everyone pulls their trashcans right out to the street and all of those are also in the right-of-ways. So, but we, like I said, we've not had any issues with parking from any of our neighbors. There's actually a neighbor that lives across the street that has a gray car. She's very excited to be able to have her family come in and stay at the rental that's right across from her house, so. I'd appreciate everybody and time and thank y'all for letting me speak.
Thank you. Any commissioners have questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I. Which short-term rentals are being approved and which ones aren't. We, we are two. I have felt, I personally have felt really conflicted and confused about a ton of these things, many of which the staff supports and some of which they do not. For me, this is a, this is reasonable. You've been operating as a short-term rental. There's no one here in opposition. So for me, this is just a march to 500 and we're only in the 100s. So I would, I understand staff's concerns regarding the parking, but I, this seems like a no-brainer for approval to me. That's just my two cents.
Can I ask, when you purchased the property, were the two parking spaces already paved?
They were. Yeah, that was the parking that was existing when I purchased the home, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, no further discussion. I'll entertain a motion to approve the application as submitted with all staff's requirements less the recommendation for denial.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Samad?
Yes.
Vogel is absent. Brown?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers, absent? Uh, Person, did I call your name? I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right. Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
And Russell?
Aye.
Did I miss anybody?
McDonald, yes.
McDonald. So, so voted. Yeah, the, the motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. And I believe we're moving on to our last application of the evening.
Yes, the last application is item number 26, file number Z 10,048, Providence Properties, STR 2 PDC located at 719 North Spruce Street. The applicant proposed to rezone the 0.61 acre site from, at 719 Spruce Street from R 2 to PDC to allow use of the property as a short-term rental 2 with a maximum stay of 29 days. The structure will be rented as one unit and the owner will not reside at this location. The property consists of a 1,302 square foot wood-framed residential structure with two bedrooms and one bath. The concrete driveway provides parking for one car. The applicant stated that there is no bill of assurance for the property and there have been no Department of Plan and Development enforcement cases or police reports for this property. And the property has not previously been in operation as a short-term rental. There are 11 approved STR applications within a quarter mile of this application's site. Staff does not support the request to rezoning from R 2 to PDC. Staff believes the request is not appropriate for this location based on the parking. We feel that parking is not sufficient and there have been objections from surrounding neighbors with concerns about the increased traffic congestion on the residential street, increased noise and reduced marketability and valuations of homes. Staff recommends denial of the PDC zoning request.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moore, could you state that last again about property values?
That's what we have heard. We've had several letters that you had in your packet, objections from surrounding neighbors with concerns about increased traffic.
So they're.
Increased traffic, increased noise, reduced marketability and valuations on the homes on Spruce Street.
So basically opinions. No, no data to support.
No, no.
Thank you. All right, looks like we have one card in support, which is from the applicant. If the applicant is present, please come to the podium.
All right, anybody hear me?
Yes. State your name for the record.
I'm Daniel Bryant. I live at 209, excuse me, North Woodrow Street, about a mile away from this proposed application. I've lived there for about 20 years. I operate three businesses in Hillcrest. Oldest of those have been operating for 20 years. I own the building next door to this property. You approved a short-term rental in it about an hour and a half ago, the consent agenda. I office in that building. And this property is surrounded by as much commercial space it is residential space. It also has a 10, I guess it's a parking area, 10-spot parking area behind it. So I'm a little confused about the parking concerns in addition to the driveway that was mentioned by Mr. Moore. Also addressing the increased traffic concerns that apparently some neighbors were concerned with. This house is on the end of the street, next to the commercial building. So of course there can be through traffic, but you don't have to go through the street to get to it. I'm also a little confused as how the intermittent use would provide more traffic than a permanent resident. As Mr. Moore mentioned, it has never been a, an STR before. It's got a long-term tenant in it now that's been there for a couple of years. It has been a rental since I've owned it for, I don't know, maybe a decade with no problems. Just trying to speak directly to some of the concerns that were mentioned. I did reach out, as you guys would want me to and expect me to, to some of the folks that I was aware of that had concerns. As far as I can tell by their absence today, I diffused most of those concerns with a lot of what I just said to you all. Some, I know that you've gotten one letter of recension, if that is a word. And then another one they sent directly to me, I thought was a little, appreciated it, but inappropriate, so I asked them to forward to you guys. I don't know if that happened or not, but regardless, they're not here. So there's sort of my opening statement. Should I pause for questions or?
Sure. Any questions by commissioners?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Do you own the Half Moon Center there, the shopping center?
No, sir. That is a, that's around the corner, over by the So Restaurant, I think is what you mean, Half Moon. What do you, maybe I don't know what you mean.
Directly, directly next door, just to the north of you.
Just behind Leo's.
The horseshoe shaped. Yes, sir, I do. Yes, sir. And that includes the Leo's out parcel there. Sorry, when you said, there's a business called Half Moon around the corner.
Well, this is a Half Moon, not a horseshoe.
Okay.
So anyway, so you're saying you're the people who would be staying at the STR, would, could park in the business parking lots?
Well, no, the business has its own parking lot in the front. Years ago, that area in the back, I'd come to this body and I made it a parking area and lots of people use it. The people across the alley use it. The, we do use it for staff in the building. They're welcome to use it. It just says Duke Parking Only, but certainly it's my lot. And if I want to allocate a parking spot for the STR, that's no problem. And the STR does have a rear entry. So that it, I would guess that both that and the one I've mentioned earlier in the commercial building will both use the rear entries primarily.
Well, the reason I ask that, the photograph doesn't show, it shows trees, not, not parking places back there, so.
I'm sorry.
I'm just asking the question.
Mr. Thrower was quite kind enough to look at the picture with me today and saw the parking area in the back. I don't know if that, that helps.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions by commissioners? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application Z 10048 as submitted with all staff's recommendations and requirements minus the recommendation for denial.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, we're going into where it is time. Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Samad?
Yes.
Vogel, absent. Baxter?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Vickers, absent. The motion passes.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate y'all very much.
All right, we are done with regular business. Now is our favorite time of the evening. Citizen communication. If there are any citizens present who wish to address the body, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and I'll, I'll give you three minutes. Hearing none, we are adjourned.